Tonight. It's five thirty, I'll need that, five thirty PM, I'll call the October third, two thousand twenty-three, County Breckenridge Planning Commission Meeting to order. Mark, are you doing roll call?
I am. Mr. Gerard.
You're.
Mr. Fractor.
Present.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Gera.
Present.
Ms. Go.
I didn't see.
Here.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken.
Just before I get to the next agenda item, I just wanted to remind, just to update or just remind everyone about the protocol for our meetings, both for commissioners and for attendees. So whenever, during the hearing process, we have questions first after staff prevent presents, we can ask them questions. Then after the applicant presents, we can ask the applicant questions. Then members, public can ask questions or make comments and I can direct them to anyone if we feel it's necessary to address or answer their questions. And then we reserve our comments to the next step. So please hold comments till the end of the hearing before we then vote or answer questions. And please excuse me if I interrupt and to remind any of my fellow commissioners and don't take it personally.
We appreciate you reminding us nicely.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda? Does it for me? Okay. So as part of a certified local government.
We will need to do the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, yes, I'm sorry. Any changes to the minutes, fellow commissioners?
I have a quick change.
Good.
I had stated in talking about the lighting that, let's see, there's no, uh, talking about landscape lighting, it says that I said we should not allow that. I did not mean that. I was just bringing up the issue of landscape lighting.
Hey, thank you, Ethan. Noted. Any other changes to the minutes? Okay, with that, we still have no changes to the agenda. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open the meeting to any public comment. If you're attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone, then star six to unmute yourself. Oh, is that on? Well, we have to, for the recording, we need it.
So where did yourself learn?
Tahoe. Where? Lake Tahoe. Olympic Village. Very nice. It's pretty. That's where she learned still.
I don't have my, I have my bus on my head. Hello, okay, testing. Okay, Janet Sutterly, just following up on the shed discussion from the last time or a couple of meetings ago. So Larissa did call and we discussed the locations of some of these sheds. And I told her, Steve, you had some on Main Street you were concerned about. But they were going to go out and have a look at, at some of these different outbuildings. And then she also brought up the idea, I don't know if she talked to planning about it, about doing a shed survey, which I, I'm sure we did like a long time ago, wasn't like fifteen years ago or something? And Moje did it, I don't know who all was involved in that. So there was a shed survey done a long time ago. And I thought it, it might be interesting to compare that to if she does do another shed survey, what that looks like now. So that was all I know since last time. Thank you.
Great idea.
So just to respond to that, we actually have started a shed survey. And Ellie's been working on that. So maybe just relay to Larissa to talk with us, so we can coordinate on that. But, yes, so this is something that we're hoping to bring to council and planning commission potentially in November. So anything else on that, Ellie?
Uh, no, I, I think I've pretty much finished mapping the shed, so it's just kind of compiling that data and organizing everything and then bringing it to planning commission and town council.
All right, great. Thanks, Janet. Other, do we have anyone online or? So we have nothing on the consent calendar. And next, we have a preliminary hearing, the Roamer single-family residence, a Class B major development. Second preliminary hearing, PL two zero two three zero three five four.
Mr. Chair, I do need to recuse myself for the same reason as last time. My employer may well work on this project.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
But I'll hand the baton to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm getting my screen going here, just one second. So as Alan said, this is the second prelim hearing for the Roamer residents. Before you, it's still a single-family residence, five bedrooms with garage, is subject to that development agreement in two thousand twenty. And then the property itself currently has a modular home that will be demoed with this application. So in our packet, staff has provided just a list of general consensus items from the previous meeting on September fifth. I won't go over those right now, but definitely just going over all the items that we had agreed upon, as well as some of the questions. The changes since the September fifth meeting, the applicant has proposed a textured colored concrete at the front of the driveway. Secondary, the applicant has revised the windows that were in question on the western elevation in that upper gable, those have been revised. Additionally, there was a change to the above garage area, that's been changed out to an actual architectural accent instead of a window. The major work and probably the major concern from our September fifth hearing was the orientation to the grid and the large massing. That ridge line has been broken up and the overall roof line has changed a little bit. And we'll get discussing that here in a bit. And then lastly, the applicant has provided an exterior lighting plan as well as detail cut sheets of those actual fixtures. So as I mentioned, a lot of the policies and such that were consensus items, we kind of have removed from the staff report and kind of parted down a little bit. The one thing that staff didn't catch in our original review is the solar panels. So we have added that under architectural compatibility, five A, five R. Staff finds that those comply, they're in good location for both solar, as well as mitigating kind of the visual impacts from the street. Jumping into twenty-four R and the bigger discussion from our last hearing is Design Standard two sixty-nine under orientation to the grid. So at the previous meeting, the commission kind of expressed concerns with that overall main ridge line. The large parallel massing to the street had some concerns with the commissioners as it ran parallel instead of perpendicular like the standard mentions. Let me jump down to my. So in the packet here, I have included this diagram. This diagram is specifically from the Design Standard two sixty-nine that discusses the appropriate and inappropriate orientations to the grid. As you can see in the diagram, it does provide four examples, one of them being inappropriate as the other three are found to be appropriate. Simply put, staff sees this as providing a facade that directly aligns with the street, either perpendicular or parallel. That just doesn't kind of cross at an asymmetrical aspect as the second from the left example, as that would be an inappropriate orientation to the grid. Additionally, the, the Design Standard two sixty-nine does discuss kind of the main ridge lines. The applicant did hear the question or the concerns from the commission and made two major changes to the overall structure. The first one is going to be changing the actual roof form. Let me jump down here. The actual roof form has been changed in two areas. The main ridge has been increased in height. So here we are. As you can see on the screen, this main ridge here has been increased by a couple of inches to further solidify that interpretation as the main ridge. And then the large parallel massing, if you look on the right side of this elevation, has been broken up and reformed to provide a secondary gable to that main ridge line gable. This further kind of solidifies that interpretation that the overall building mass is oriented directly to the grid. It has a primary facade that is abutting the street. Definitely the additional architectural accents of that main ridge line and then the secondary ridge that's been reconfigured on this right side. Staff finds that further kind of solidifies that interpretation. So staff definitely does find that this revision does comply with Design Standard two sixty-nine. I can hop back up to my staff report. And I've added another little graphic in here that kind of compares the two. One, this overall site plan from the Roamer on the left, and then an example of the building orientation from the diagram, diagram above. You can see the overall form definitely does align significantly with the example, as well as the ridge lines, both green, blue, and orange are all oriented perpendicular to the orientation of the street. So staff does find the proposal complies, but we definitely do have a question for the commission if they agree with this interpretation. And no negative points should be incurred under the standard. The next discussion is going to be under the solid to void ratio. Let me hop back down here. So as mentioned before, the windows in the western elevation up in the upper gable was changed from three individual windows to one window in that upper gable. Staff finds that this complies with the original intentions of Design Standard two seventy-nine and three nineteen. So staff does find that these are appropriate and we do have a question for the commission if they agree that the revised proposal does not warrant negative points under Design Standard three nineteen. The last aspect, and I touched minimally earlier, the applicant has proposed a textured color, colored concrete at the apron of the driveway. As you can see on the screen, this satisfies the regulations from Design Standard two sixty-eight under automobiles and parking. Staff does not recommend any more negative or no longer recommends negative points under Design Standard two sixty-eight. And we just want to ensure that the commission confirms that. And then lastly, like I said, the exterior lighting plan has been proposed and that was included in your packet. Those all comply, staff has no concerns, they are dark sky compliant. And there's a short overview of the revisions since then. Staff is happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Great, thanks, Cliff. Okay, Mark, is that the, any questions?
Cliff, can you enlighten the panel as to the town's intention of the regulation that necessitates the concrete apron between the two asphalt surfaces of the road and the asphalt driveway? What, what is the, just to give us some background as to what the purpose of that is?
I personally do not have much background with it. The overall standard itself does distinguish that it wants to basically separate the driveway from the actual right-of-way and the textured colored concrete stamped, et cetera, is the easiest way to do that. I'm happy to defer it to Chris.
Do you or Chris have any insight in that?
Yeah, the intent, I think, was just to show like a material that had a little bit more texture or, you know, obviously stamped concrete wasn't a historic material, but I think it's something that this provides a little bit more texture than something that looks so, you know, blatantly modern like asphalt or just plain concrete. I think that was the, that was the intent.
An aesthetic consideration rather than a practical or engineering.
Correct, yeah, it's definitely an aesthetic consideration within the conservation district.
Thank you. No other questions, okay?
Elaine?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Ethan?
Uh, thank you, Cliff, I have no questions.
Cliff, no questions and thank you for presenting and addressing from where we left off for the last hearing on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Applicant Janet? Please introduce yourself again, just for the record.
Janet Sutterly, architect for the Roamer residents. I wanted to address a couple of concerns from the last meeting, specifically Steve on the cottonwoods. They don't really like cottonwoods and so they did hear your comment but decided against it. And they also felt like it would be better screening of the parking and the garage doors if it were a spruce tree versus a deciduous tree. So I did run that up the flagpole and that's where that went. For Susan, who's not here, she was discussing the finish on the metal panels being a bit of a contrast with the white siding and the owners also wanted to stick with that because they did want the contrast and they felt like the, the more rusted appearance was more authentic and blended in better with the historic area. Then I did want to point out also on the concrete transition that that is the exact same treatment we did on the Coon residence next door. So for better or for worse, that's the same thing that was approved next door. So I just wanted to add that as well. I know Ethan had some practical questions about heating and I don't, I don't have the answer to that. You know, if we just heat that little area, it's going to be a problem and if we don't, it's going to crack and, you know, it's concrete. So it's something that we'll have to discuss with the builders, we get into that. So that's pretty much it and I wanted to thank Cliff for laying everything out on the roof line. I want to do a very quick presentation for the benefit of the commissioners that were not involved in the Coon residence to help kind of clarify some questions on the roof line orientation. Ethan, I know you asked at the last meeting, you know, what is it we're supposed to be evaluating here and so on and so forth. And I had a whole folder put together of photos in the historic district of both new and old and historic buildings where the roof lines, the main primary roof lines were running parallel with the street. So I thought it might be worth it to just run through these again really quickly, just so you guys could see how much of that we've either had approved in recently or were the historic conditions. Because not all of the buildings obviously had the primary roof line as a gable facing the street. So we'll just go through them quickly. This is a new construction north of the Brown Kelly residence. And this is the, called the Epic on French Street, which was also, well, I guess it's not so recent now, but a number of years ago. Again, these are roof lines where the main roof runs parallel to the street. This is the Casey residence apparently before, so we can keep going, I think there's another one of that. This is over at two eleven Washington, this is a historic structure that has been modified and now looks like this, but the main roof line was also parallel. The one on the left was a historic restoration, again, main roof line. This is one hundred South Harris Street, main roof line, parallel to the primary, on the primary facade. I forget the name of this historic building, but it's just north of the firehouse. And this is another historic example, the Milney House. Church Residence. And this one's up on High Street, I think it belonged, it's Dave Tyler's house from behind. And you can't even see that one, but it's, you never see it anyway, but it's up on the corner of Jefferson and Ridge on the southeast corner. And that one also is parallel. Think we, oh, French Street, right, this is next to Kate Brewer's house between Kate's and the Christmas house.
That's all the ones.
That's all of them, okay. Anyway, I didn't want to prolong that, but I just thought I'd give you the research we had done on the Coon residence. And then to finish this off, on the Coon residence, this is the east elevation that I wanted to show. And this faces the street and this is in fact an example of a main, of a main ridge line that runs parallel to the street and we did receive negative three points for this. And it's very, very clear that that is the dominant roof line. So that was just for the benefit of the commissioners that weren't at the Coon residence. So you kind of knew where that discussion was on the last one. So there you have it. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Janet?
No, no questions. I think your revision is very well done and achieves the purpose of your intent. Thank you.
Elaine, any questions?
I guess all the examples you showed, it was all very clear that like the parallel one to the road was the highest and you didn't have the big tall dormer higher like yours. So were there any where there was precedent that we, they decided that the, you know, kind of have a long, wide building like this, but then a higher peak and they said that that was the main what'd they call it, more main? Called the main ridge, the main ridge, yeah. But I thank you for your presentation, it's helpful to me. And I did drive around today, actually just before this meeting and noticed that there's a lot of variance and everything in the area. But we still have the code to deal with.
No questions, thanks for listening to us.
Ethan?
Thank you, Janet, for clarifying all that, I appreciate it and I have no questions.
I have no questions and thank you and to tribute to your talent that, to be able to address these issues and meet the needs of a client. And now open to the public. There's, is there anyone online? Okay. So I will, at this time, I'll wait, sorry, wrong place. So public hearings, if there are any members of the public who wish to comment, please raise your hand on the icon at the bottom of the screen or press star nine if you're attending by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Okay. That closes the public hearing. Any comments from the commissioners? And I guess at this time we have, why don't we roll in, answer comments and then answers for Cliff's questions, which I have here. So actually Cliff, your first question, you say, do we agree with the, the orientation of the garage incurs negative three points? But do you want us to just say we agree with the whole point analysis? Whether we do or don't?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's more or less that first question is just to reconfirm the negative three points. And then add a final question if you think they're ready for final.
Okay, great. So first question is, do we agree with the overall point analysis, including the negative three points for the garage? Second, do we agree the main ridge line is now oriented perpendicular? Two, question three, do we now agree that the proposed windows comply with Design Standard three one nine? Do we have it, four, do we have any other comments on the project or concerns with the point analysis? I guess you did have it in there at the end, sorry. And then five is, are we ready for a final hearing? So, Mark?
I agree that the, with the point analysis, which would include the negative three for the garage, I believe that the present revision clearly orients the main ridge perpendicular to the street and that no negative points are incurred or warranted. I believe that the windows clearly comply with Standard three nineteen and I have no other comments and I believe this is ready for a final.
Good, that's fine. Elaine?
I agree with the negative three points for the garage. I don't agree with the main ridge, so sorry. Does the commission agree to the windows? Yes. And I don't have any other comments or concerns.
Elaine, do you think they're ready for final?
Sure. Yes.
Like I said, thank you, Janet, for listening to us. I think this main ridge issue is a difficult one. But I think you've done everything you can do on this project to attempt to address that. And the, unfortunately, the problem with this project is it's just wider than if you look at the, at the elevations and this is where I gave in on the Coon, on the first project. If you look at the north elevation and the south elevation, I think the house reads perpendicular. If you look at the rear elevation, it just reads completely wide, but that's the rear elevation and the front is just kind of a mixed bag of the others. So I'm not going to stand on the principle that it isn't perpendicular given the slideshow and we looked at those in the Coon project as well, so I'm okay with where you ended up. Still like to see a cottonwood on the northeast corner of the project, which isn't anywhere near the garage, just to provide some variety to the landscaping and be consistent with the town, but if they don't like cottonwoods, I guess so be it. Otherwise, I think all of your changes addressed our, our issues. So I was looking for the questions here while I was drawing up here, page seventeen. Question one, the orientation of the garage does incur the negative three points, that's just the way it is.
That's my comment.
And, and I agree with the point analysis. I'm surrendering on the landscaping as well, even without the cottonwood. While I don't agree that the main ridge is oriented perpendicular, I do agree that no negative points should be incurred. I agree that the proposed windows now comply with Design Standard three nineteen. I have no other comments and I agree that it's ready for a final.
Thank you, Sue. Ethan?
Thank you, Janet, again. I first say that I basically concur with Steve's analysis on the, on the ridge alignment. And and so, uh, on the questions, I agree that the orientation of the garage incurs a negative three points. I am okay with the commitment, with the main ridge being oriented the way it is, so no negative points. I agree that the proposed windows comply. I have no other comments, and I believe that we are ready to go to final. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. I I agree about the negative three points for the garage. Um, and with overall point analysis, I, I do think with the changes, the main ridge is perpendicular. And that you've done the best you can with the nature of the lot dimensions. The windows do comply with three nineteen. No other comments, agree with the overall point analysis, and we're ready for final. As a note on cottonwoods, as a recently educated person from the FDRD hike for local flora, cottonwoods only grow naturally along rivers and streams, your bodies of water, because they require a whole lot of water. And so actually planting a cottonwood there would, uh, would require a lot of water, which we kind of against our intentions of reducing water load and irrigation.
Yeah, um, just a little history on that. Apparently, this specific species called Balma Giliad, it's a type of cottonwood. And it was historically planted in the historic district back during that era. Yeah, I mean, water conservation probably wasn't as high priority then.
All right, that we adjourned the preliminary hearing, and I guess we'll see you back soon for a final hearing. So, uh, we have no work session items?
Oh, yep.
You're welcome to come back in.
We did a ranger, and they're explaining all the trees and how they evolved to live up here. And I said, where are the cottonwoods? And they said they only grow down by the, by the rivers.
Yeah, ours was like along a irrigation canal.
Yeah, we did a big cottonwood planning project out along block eleven about maybe eight, ten years ago. Ran some irrigation out there to get water for several years. But they're right by the river there. They're doing really well.
Yeah, yeah, once the roots get down.
Getting pretty big now, too.
All right, so we have no work session, uh, items on the agenda, uh, town council updates.
Thank you, Alan. First of all, my condolences to Mark and Mike. Now, congratulations for, um, for for, for the weddings and condolences that your wallets are a little
Oh, yeah.
Less bulky today, but anyway, congratulations.
And you went through that last year.
Yeah, two years ago.
Two years.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
One girls that both just got engaged. So we have to discuss our compensation now.
Okay, so, uh, as far as town council went, it was a good meeting. Um, first thing the council did is they met early and we went out to Milney to see, um, basically, um, after a two million dollar effort and, um, headed up by the Breck Heritage or the Breck History, and then, um, Randy Kilgore as a contractor, they have restored the Milney residence, uh, put a nice beautiful basement underneath it. And have restored the Everline House next to it. If you haven't had a chance to go over there and take a look around, it's really pretty impressive. They've done a bunch of, there, there's old cabin walls on the interior, the actual original cabin, historic cabin is a pretty small part of the Milney, and, um, they've done a bunch of, um, peek through type things where there's windows that, um, are framed, and you can look at the old blogs and chinking and all that. So, um, it's pretty, pretty, pretty impressive. Breck History will be moving their offices over there probably within the next month and, um, out of the gaming cabin where they are right now on Main Street. So, anyway, it's exciting for them, and it's really, council was really impressed with, uh, how that whole project turned out, so. Yeah, obviously you guys got a chance to look at that a few years ago and approve it, so. Anyway, um, yeah. Let's see. We had, uh, Sarah's second reading on the net zero density code amendment was approved, so that is now approved. Will take effect here in another thirty days or so. And then there was an ordinance that approved a transfer of part of the property out at the stables to Suzanne Ellen Sabo um, and her group that are doing the development out there. So that was part of the overall deal was that they would eventually take ownership of those properties, and then they'll be selling them with deed restrictions on them, et cetera. So, um, at the, um, evening, uh, later in the meeting, then we discussed, um, dark sky. Julia, do you want to just provide a short summary of where that? Yeah, go ahead, Ellie.
They briefly discussed the, um, plan for the public lighting replacement, and that's going to be happening over five year time periods, I believe. And then also just gave updates on the exterior code, exterior lighting code changes moving through planning commission, and they will be coming to town council next week, I believe. Or, oh, twenty four.
Thanks. There's about a couple hundred Excel pools that Excel ended up owning for history I won't go into, but anyway, they're, uh, um, they're not part of the replacement program. They're in the Highlands. At this point, they're not part of that replacement program. So. Anyway.
Because Excel is not willing to accept the cost of replacement, or what?
Yeah, it, there's a cost associated with, go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, it gets a little bit complicated, so. We're not really done working with Excel yet, but one of their first answers to us was that the town would have to purchase the, all the, all the light poles, and then trench and run our own electrical and have our own, you know, hookup to the power there. Which is very costly to do all that. So we are, we, meaning our public works department, is gonna try to work with them a little more um, intently over the years and try to get them to and put conforming fixtures on the poles and, you know, maintain ownership of those poles. Um, the town has a contract to maintain the fixtures, although we don't own them, so it gets very odd, so. Anyways, they're gonna keep plugging along over the next few years. It's, um, you know, we don't have to be converting out all our streetlights until five years after certification. So in reality, it's like six years from now. So, well, they're gonna keep trying, so.
So the, the lighting that the town does own, for example, the lighting that goes up Ski Hill Road and goes into the various neighborhoods, the town owns that, and the town has their own power supply to all those lights that's metered somewhere else?
Yeah, we have a deal with Excel, another contract with them on a rate that just the town gets for those streetlights. And the Highlands is the, it's like a hundred and eighty something poles that Excel owns out of like sixteen hundred. And then the town owns like sixteen hundred, so it's just, um, a small portion. But they're primarily in the Highlands, and they're sporadic in some of the other neighborhoods, um, as well, but not extensive.
I understand you. The lights are electrified by direct contact to the present electrical grid there, and the town simply pays X number of dollars per lamp?
That's my understanding, but I'm not the the one in control of that contract.
Julia, on behalf of our POA, I had really extensive conversations with Excel about the lights. And they had agreed, and then for various other reasons that don't relate to anything, that if we, as a subdivision, bought the skull caps to take the top light out of them, that they had no objection to the town putting those in during their normal course of maintaining the lights. And in fact, the town did that for a light that was near my house, and it really gets to like, I'd say ninety percent of the dark sky issues by just capping the tops. And I, I think they'd do that again if that was a step that could be accomplished, and I think, I don't know about other sections of the Highlands, but our section would have paid to do that. Not very expensive, it's just a little aluminum plate that fits right in the top.
That's good to know. Thanks, Steve.
Great. So, yeah, it's, um, council's gonna be looking at our work session on the twenty fourth on the lighting policy, the stuff that you guys discussed a couple meetings ago. So, um, the big discussion, um, was, once again, on BGV, we came back and, and discussed several properties. The first one was the North Gondola Lot, parcel one, where it's proposed to be left as parking, which seems straightforward enough. Staff's main question there was with the council is, okay, how do you want us to address this? For years, it's been sitting there, basically a stark asphalt lot, not meeting town standards for drainage facilities, for, um, lighting, for landscaping, for snow stacking. So, um, we wanted to have a discussion with the council about that in terms of, you know, now that this is basically gonna be the use going forward on this and into the foreseeable future, just parking. You know, do you want us to bring it all the way up to code? If you do, we're probably talking about using twenty-five percent of that site to accomplish some of those things, because our landscaping policies alone require like twenty-five square feet per parking space to be landscape, uh, landscaped area, aside from that. And, um, so, um, after some discussion on that, the council weighed in essentially to say, uh, as far as landscaping goes, we'd like to see, uh, beefed up perimeter landscaping around the property, especially Park Avenue, I think was an area that was pointed out at. There's nothing really out there, much of anything right now in terms of landscaping. Yes, we need to have some retention facility, detention facility there, so that the water doesn't just sheet flow into, basically over to the to the streets or down to the Blue River. And that there's some type of minimal kind of dark sky type lighting that we could pursue there to improve the lighting situation without getting, going crazy like, you know, over at City Market or something like that. So, essentially, that's where they landed on that. Uh, we also talked about, do the parking spaces need to meet code? And this is interesting because the parking agreement requires that there's about six hundred spaces on that lot and adjacent lots to get to a total count of like fifteen hundred and sixty parking spaces between the three lots there. That, that's and, and they, and they're able to accomplish that by efficient parking during the winter time with an attendant there when there's snow on the ground and you can't see the striped lines. If you go over there and count the striped lines, it's only about five hundred and thirty spaces. So, um, the council is generally okay with the concept of continuing to just, it's what you can fit in there, but one of the requirements is gonna be that that's managed at all times, that the parking has to be managed, so that they are able to achieve those numbers, um, like they have in the past.
At all times or during ski season?
During ski season, yeah, when, you know, on the peak days when you're filling that lot up. Well, that's the first lot to fill up, Mike, so that one is almost always had issue. So, yeah, so, um, and Chris has even pointed out, sometimes it just depends on who's doing that, that parking management, you know, um, some people are much better at it than others. So, but, uh, anyway, um, we talked about we, we talked about parcel three, which is a South Gold Rush Lot where the town homes, the duplexes are proposed. There's, um, eight duplexes, I believe, sixteen units total there. The revised plans that BGV provided have pulled pretty much all disturbance outside of the wetland setback, which is a comment the council had a couple meetings ago, so they're very pleased about that. We're, um, we don't have a good handle on tree disturbance, so remember that, that was an issue back with the commission, and there's something that I think's embedded in the master plan about existing master plan about preserving trees out there along Park Avenue. They're gonna be coming back with that, but our suspicion, looking at the plans, is that a fair amount of that tree, natural tree buffer is gonna be going away. Um, so they're gonna be providing that information, um, at an upcoming meeting. Chris, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I was gonna say, relative to that, uh, we gave the history of, you know, the, the planning commission's comments of how that, uh, parcel is eventual, essentially downsized within the previous Gondola Lot site specific development review where they started out with a much larger number of units, and then had to reduce it based on the planning commission's concern for retaining tree buffers, and so noted, noted the, um, the downsizing, and it also showed a comparison side by side in the memo of the latest iteration of it in March, the last time that you saw it, compared to what they have now. And then based on that, the council wanted a little bit more information to have an exact tree survey for the plan now before they really commented on it.
On the North Gondol, uh, North Gold Rush Lot, just north of where the duplexes are, that's where the parking structure is proposed along with, um, employee housing. That number of units is still to be determined. But they'll be coming at the next meeting in, on October twenty-fourth, I think with more definitive counts on that, which would include housing for both to meet BGV's requirement that they'll have for housing in, based on our code, but also then additional housing for both Vale and possibly the town. The town's interested in a certain level, but only to a certain level. The other thing we talked about there is that it's gonna, the parking structure is gonna move into that hillside a fair amount, so there's gonna be a fair amount of hillside disturbance. And so there's gonna be this give and take in terms of, you, if you want to accommodate the parking, you need to, and then provide for housing. What they're saying is we're gonna need to move into the hillside some, and from staff's perspective, they probably do. It's, if they don't, they're gonna move out towards the, towards Park Avenue more, and that tree buffer is gonna go away. And so it's kind of a give and take in terms of looking at it from that perspective. So, one of the things we've talked about is there may be some maximum point assignment that's identified, it's below the maximum threshold in the code for the hillside disturbance. Anyway, that's still to be decided. But, uh, we do feel that that, maintaining that buffer allowed along the street is important also, and I know that was reflected in the master plan and And I know that was reflected in the master plan and what some of the commissioners had said previously, so. Parcel, parcel five is a two large, single family lots at the end of four o'clock run, which is in the county. It's just to the, it, it's, it's basically adjacent to where the One Ski Hill Place project is located. And so anyway, that, that's just two.
Excuse me, the East P, the former East Peak.
East Peak Hotel, thank you, sorry. And second time today, I made that mistake, I think. Anyway, that is something that council really has very little concerns about. It's two single families and they're pretty supportive of that. On the Timber Trail, parcel six, the other one they discussed was Timber Trail. And that's the extension, essentially Timber Trail. And there had been a couple alternative accesses shown to get to the, this twenty lot subdivision that they're proposing, that they have an agreement with the ski area to acquire about eleven acres. And council's not supportive of a new route, but rather accessing through Timber Trail itself. Chris was able to find a bunch of documentation that clearly indicates that at the end, at that cul-de-sac at the end, there's a track there, Track A, which is intended for future access. And, and that would be the access into the new subdivision area. And it would avoid a bunch of disturbance by doing that instead of going and cutting a whole new road from the bottom. There's some discussions still about maybe a lot or two could go away there. There's some third acre lots. And there's a little concern about, you know, how much programming on a third of an acre. And so, you know, Chris suggested maybe we would put a floor area ratio to limit that on the smaller lots. I think we're still gonna wait and see if they come back with some revisions to that plan. But overall, their council's fairly supportive of that. One of the things we'll be getting up there is we will be getting a dedication of open space fee in lieu for the new subdivision because any new subdivision requires ten percent dedication. So anyway, that's the summary of five parcels. The, the remaining parcel, parcel four, which is the old East Peak Eight Hotel site is going to the council on Friday morning in a special meeting starting at eight thirty. And we are gonna go through a number of issues with that. First of all, talking about overall proposed programming there in terms of density uses compared to the old East Peak Eight Hotel project. We'll be talking about what are they doing in terms of protection of cucumber gulch? And there's some variances that are required to basically increase the size of the detention facility that's across the street. It's already serving some of the other places like One Ski Hill Place up there. We'll also be discussing traffic on Ski Hill Road, traffic reports and that. And finally, the last thing is outdoor energy use. They have said that they don't want to be exempted from RAMP, the new RAMP program, but that they are proposing a different way to accomplish it. And just real quickly, because we've been working on it, I can share this with you. It's really what they want to do is try to, to the extent possible, put solar on all their existing buildings that they have to offset the outdoor energy use on the East Peak Eight Hotel site. I think overall, talking with Jesse Burley, our sustainability coordinator, we're fairly comfortable with that approach. Because one, one of the reasons we are is because they're also saying we want to go beyond just outdoor. We want to offset all our indoor use as well. So they want to use renewables basically to offset everything in this new development. So there'll be more discussions coming about that on Friday, but that's just a little take on that for you. So, yeah, if you're interested, you can tune in or come here if you're really want to. Chris, I, I guess beyond that, we've got meetings scheduled on October twenty-fourth, we'll be starting to finalize the last pieces that need to kind of, this puzzle need to put together. And then the idea going into November, would we have actual deal points of a development agreement? Probably a first meeting in November with the idea of first and second readings on the development agreement. Second meeting in November, first meeting in December. So theoretically, we'd be done by the end of the year with the development agreement. So that's kind of overall schedule as it's laid out right now. Did I miss anything, Chris, you want to add?
No, I, I think that's a, that's a good summary of where we are. There's still like a lot of, you know, small, like, we're trying to work through as many issues at each meeting as possible. So we have as many loose ends to get into the draft development agreement and start talking to those issues. But, I mean, so far it seems like both parties are, are kind of aligned in the direction that's going.
Mark, I mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, I heard once again that Vale is interested in getting some employee housing out of the parking garage. And Vale has Breckenridge Terrace. I think that the town should really push and encourage them to redevelop that piece of real estate, increase the density there and get the workforce housing that they need so that they're not taking it away from the opportunity for workforce housing for other uses in that parking garage. And then the other question I have, does the owner, in this case B G V, have the right to move density? Is that a by right?
No, that's, this is all part of the negotiation, Mark.
So the town would have to grant the opportunity for them to move the density that they now have in the parking lot up the hill.
Correct. Right now, the only way you can, you, there's a couple of ways you can transfer density. One is you can propose to buy it from the Upper Blue T D R Bank, which is coming from backcountry density. And it can land on us. You can propose within a master plan area to move density from one spot to another. So for example, if they wanted to come and say, we're gonna take all the density off Gold Rush and move it over to North Gondola via the old, old plan, they could do that because it's all within a master plan. The third way is through a development agreement. So they have to do it through this, and so it's seen as all part of the negotiation here is moving this density around is what is the town getting? I think overall what the council's seeing is what we're gonna get hopefully is an undeveloped North Gondola Lot site. And we, we're probably gonna get some type of development up at East Peak Eight Hotel site anyway. So they're comfortable with it. Granted, there'd be less density up there today than there was before because the council passed that ordinance, it got rid of the mass bonus essentially. So whereas before, I think it was a hundred and forty-one units that were up at East Peak Eight Hotel, one forty-three. And now there's over two hundred that are required for the same size building because you don't get the exemption for always lobbies, all that other stuff, so.
I, I think that the numbers, if I remember right, we've been in this report all day. But I think it was one forty-three for the previously approved East Peak Eight Hotel. And the new version is about three percent smaller in terms of gross square footage. I think it's two nineteen, two to two sixteen or two nineteen. But you can see how big of a jump it is by not having that mass bonus and then having all common areas, even subtrading counted as density.
Yeah.
I guess my concern would not be so much that hotel, because as you say, the mass bonus not being there would actually decrease the mass there. But we've got masks that they're going to add above Timber Trail. And that certainly is going to increase that density there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is only partially related, but I'm curious about these two custom homes. Are they gonna apply their same model to those and essentially sell fifty-two shares in each of those custom homes?
They have, yeah, I mean, they would qualify as being in that resort property pool because it's, it's attached to the rest of the East Peak Eight Hotel site. So, yeah, I think that would be the plan, but I haven't heard the latest if, if there's, he hasn't made any commitment to say, no, it's just gonna be single family.
I mean, I, I think they were, I, I don't know, I thought he said that they were supposed to be single family, but I don't know the I guess I, I don't feel confident enough to say that they, they wouldn't, all the ones above Timber Trail, they're actually in a zone that does not allow short-term rental despite being adjacent to the ski, the ski area.
But can't they get around that by selling the shares?
I don't, I think the agreement is that it's to be whole ownership. I mean, I think that Mike has been pretty deliberate in terms of how he's, he's marketing that and presenting that to the, to the council.
Yeah, and there's, so there's gonna be no short-term rentals at the Timber Trail site, those twenty lots. Also no short-term rentals at the South Gold Rush. Because, right, because they're in the same land use district as the Woods, which doesn't have short-term rentals except for a couple of the ones right at the south end. Yeah.
So that, that creates a discrepancy between the existing Timber Trail that can short-term rental.
Correct.
And the new Timber Trail, which would not be able to.
Well, they will when permits free up.
No, no, they'll be in zone three. So they're not gonna, yeah, they're not gonna qualify. And actually, that could, I, I, I think honestly that mitigates some of the traffic issues that Timber Trail might have because it, it's likely you're not gonna see as many, you know, those things occupied all the time.
I do want to correct, they'll be in zone three, they can get a license when the number of licenses in that zone reduces to four hundred. Yeah. But they're at fifteen hundred licenses right now.
A little history too, yeah, Mark, I, I heard, I heard your comment, just in terms about the, the change in the, the density. I mean, if you look at the history of how many amendments you've done to the master plan and then I, I think around about ten of them, but the original master plan that we have on record is from nineteen eighty-four. And within there, there was a lot more homes proposed basically from where Timber Trail is to the maintenance building. There was even at one point, I think on the eighty-four or eighty-six amended master plan, it showed four o'clock run being rerouted so they could actually get homes on, on both sides. And then, you know, kind of in the early two thousands, that was kind of downscaled a little bit and pulled into just having the Timber Trail. But I, I guess the point is that there's always been flux within the, the master plan. And, you know, it's kind of a constantly, you know, changing thing based on what's presented through a, through development agreements and what the direction that the council thinks is best at the time.
It's gonna require a master plan amendment, both down here and up there at the it would bring timber, well, Timber Trail, that whole area is already within the peak seven and eight master plan. But it's gonna be essentially an upzoning to allow those twenty additional units. And so that's gonna be a full public process that you guys wouldn't be involved in. And it'll have to go, you know, they still have to pass muster on all that in order for, to set the stage to actually go and do a subdivision there.
This has nothing to do with Breckenridge, but where I come from, if you wanted to do twenty homes like that, you'd have to have a portion of that allocated to some workforce housing. And that might mean that there's four townhouse units that go in there. Yeah. And had the town been doing this for forty years, we'd have far less of a problem than we have now.
And even the, when twenty-four A was amended about three years ago, we didn't put that requirement in for single family or duplexes. It, for other development, they have to provide housing. Like for the East Peak Eight Hotel site, he's gonna have to provide forty-five units, whatever that is, but to offset his housing requirement. Yeah.
When is, I, I forget what number of Main Street, but when are they taking up the, the old R M U site?
Uh, October twenty-fourth. Yep, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be a busy agenda on October twenty-fourth.
That's a de novo hearing and they'll just start basically from the beginning and?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Sure. Any commissioners, any other comments, questions? All right.
So, is that, six thirty-seven, the Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting is adjourned.
Good night all.
Right.